Welcome everyone to our Tuesday, November 27th, Daily City Recreation Meeting. And for those wishing to address the Recreation Commission on any item on the agenda, or under public appearance or oral communications, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance to the City Council Chambers and submit to staff members as early in the meeting as possible. Also, persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in this meeting should call the Department of Library and Recreation Services as soon as possible prior to the meeting. I'll get everyone to rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of nine states of America and two republics for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with unity and justice.
Joseph May, we had the roll call.
You may have a roll call, Chair Pastor. Commissioner Flamenco?
Here.
Vice Chair Sisson?
Here.
Chair Pastor?
Here.
And absent this evening are Commissioners Landos and Commissioner Luna.
May I have an approval of this evening's agenda, please?
Aye.
Motion to approve?
I move that the...
Okay. Those in favor of approving this evening's agenda, do say aye?
Aye.
Okay. And may I have a motion to approve our last month's minutes?
No, please don't. We neglected to include those in the packet. So we will bring two sets of minutes to you at our next meeting. I apologize for that.
Okay, I jumped the gun, sorry folks. Okay. And let's begin with our Director's Report. Okay, Joseph?
Thank you, Chair Pastor. It's my pleasure once again to welcome back from our Engineering Division of our Public Works Department, Jimmy Foo, to give us an update on Altoloma Park. I don't recall what month it was, but it wasn't too far in the distant past when Jimmy provided an overview of what is happening at Altoloma Park. And now that we're getting closer to the finish line, we've invited Jimmy to come back and give you an update. Take it away, Jimmy.
All right. Thanks, Joseph. So my name is Jimmy Foo, Public Works, Daily City. The reason we're here tonight is to give you an update on the progress of the Altoloma Top Lot renovation project. So as you recall, we presented the project to you at your April 24th meeting. At that point in time, we had completed our public outreach with our conceptual plans, public outreach to the community. And after the Recreation Committee meeting, or Commission meeting, we proceeded to complete the construction documents and to get a package ready for construction contractor advertisements. That was advertised in July, we received three bids, of which Suarez and Munoz was the low bidder, low responsible bidder. In August 13th, City Council awarded Suarez and Munoz with the construction contract for the project. And the contractor began construction in September 24th, two months ago. So in their contract documents, they are stipulated to complete the project substantially in January, but as you'll see from the pictures, they'll probably beat that deadline. So this is the Altoloma Top Lot. It's located in the city's St. Francis neighborhood. Altoloma Avenue fronts the top lot. We have Westmore High School off to Page to the left. We have St. Francis Boulevard off to the right. It's a triangle lot, pretty compact. Here are some photos of the top lots before construction. This is a view from Altoloma Avenue looking straight on at the park. A view from the southern corner of the park looking northwest. Here's a view from the opposite corner. So this is what we started with. This is a rendering that was part of our outreach packet. You'll see that there's a five to 12-year-old structure off to the left, a two to five-year-old structure off to the right, and in the back, swing set. So this is an update on the construction progress. First day of construction, the contractors at the site mobilizing, construction fencing erected, and their equipment is preparing to mobilize. Thursday of that same week, demolition is pretty far along already, with grading occurring. You'll see that the lawn has been stripped up, stockpiled, ready to be off-hauled. Here we have a photo from October 1st. The contractors are digging our stormwater retention pit. The gravel stockpile to the right of the picture, that's the rock gravel that will end up in the drainage pit. So the site is designed to detain all of the stormwater that falls on it, and the gravel pits serves the purpose of storing and filtering dead water. So here we have a photo from October 8th. We're looking at a backflow prevention device. The irrigation system is completed, and the backflow prevention device, or BFP, separates the park irrigation system from the city's water main that prevents backflow and contamination of our city system. In the foreground, you'll see the formwork for the retaining curb that's along the project Moving forward, October 15th was planting day. You'll see in the back there, that's our landscape architect, also the assistant to the city manager, Steven Sote, designed the landscape for the project, and he was there on planting day to provide instructions to the contractor. So the landscaping is native, drought-tolerant plants, and then will attract the pollinators. Here we have a photo from the end of October, last month. You'll see that the fence has been erected. This type of aluminum fencing is pretty consistent with fencing at other city facilities. The aluminum does well in our Daily City environment. So November 20th, there was a couple of weeks where there wasn't work. The play equipment is a long lead item, and there was a little bit of a gap while we waited for it to arrive on-site. But you'll see last week, they started installing the play equipment. So this is a photo from last Tuesday. The poles are starting to be erected. The Wednesday before the long break, most of the poles are in place. There wasn't any work that day because of rain. So here we have a photo from Monday. You'll see that what we're looking at is the five to 12-year-old structure. It's mostly been completed, pretty close to the finish line with respect to the installation of the equipment. And then the photo from this morning, this is looking at the two to five-year-old structure. In the foreground is the future swing set. Here we have a panoramic video of the site from this morning, so. You'll see right there, that's the Altoloma Top Lot monument that we preserved and carried forward to the new design. There was also two benches from the previous project that we were able to salvage and reuse on the site. So going forward, there's still felt and drainage to be installed. The picnic table needs to be installed. That was an addition from the Recreation Commission. That was a request from Commissioner Landos, I believe. So we added that into the package. And then the engineered wood fiber, the wood chip surfacing that needs to be installed, site cleanup, and then audit by a certified playground safety inspector to ensure that everything's ADA and safe. So with that, originally, we were hoping to complete construction by the end of this week, but because of the rain, that's a little bit up in the air. But we're pretty close, and I feel like if we do get a break in the rain, we only need about, you know, three or four days to kind of finish up the project.
Oh yeah. Not gonna we would get those three or four days extra.
And that concludes my update.
Thank you very much, Mr. Foo.
Thank you, Jimmy.
And we wanted to keep this on your radar, because we are hoping that you will join us, along with members of the neighborhood there in the City Council, for a ribbon cutting at a date to be determined. It might be in the coming weeks, and part of it is weather-dependent and availability. Worst-case scenario, we might do it after the first of the year, but we definitely will keep you guys in the loop and hope that you're there to join us on that day, probably on a Saturday, to cut the ribbon and welcome the community back to the park.
Yeah. Well, fantastic. I'll bet you get quite a few curiosity viewers in the neighborhood asking how things are progressing also, as this was developing outside their doors, so. Yeah, so thank you. Thank you for a great job. Okay, take care, Jimmy.
Our next item, Chair Pastor, is an overview of, a program update of all the fun and exciting activities that are taking place at the War Memorial Community Center. I know we drive by it, it's in the center of town, and we see it all the time, but, you know, unless you stop and go inside, you might not be aware of all the huge array of activities that take place over there. And we realize it's been a while. It's been a while since we gave you an overview of that, so we're gonna do that this evening. And Gina is queuing up her PowerPoint presentation, and will be joining us up here any second. Take it away, Gina.
My name is Gina Maganini, and I'm gonna be presenting about our community engagement up at the War Memorial Community Center. So at the community center, we offer open gyms, we offer classes, we do music classes, we do zumba, we do everything like some of our other sites. But I wanted to focus on the community engagement portion of it. And at the site that we do, we service seniors, active adults, teens, and youth, and I wanted to highlight the different activities and events that we've done throughout the last year. So we've done free volleyball clinics. And the way that we've done this is we partnered with Beach Vibes, which is a local volleyball club, and they've offered free volleyball clinics for girls, five to 18. And the reason why we picked girls is because recently, I've noticed as an athlete, girls aren't playing sports as much, and we wanted to emphasize the importance of women in sports. So we offered the free clinic. It was an online registration. We had 118 participants in total over the three clinics that we offered, and there was 30 different schools in attendance. This is one of the clinics, as you could see, there's a lot of happy girls. They learn basic skills of volleyball, including bumping, setting, diving, they had a really good time. Another event, actually league that we produce up at the War Memorial, is gonna be the Friday Night Hoops League. Those of you guys who are around Daily City might have remembered Showcase. So Showcase was a fabulous program that I actually participated in a long time ago. So these kids that are actually participating in this league played in Showcase. And this age group is sometimes forgotten, so we wanted to kind of reach out to them to see if they'd be interested. So this age group, we did 20 to 22. The average age for the kids that participated was 20. It was a coed league, and it was a small league, only 27 and a half hours. We did survey the kids, and they were interested in participating in it again, and they're interested in paying for it. So moving forward, hopefully, next summer, we'll be able to conduct a league that these kids will be able to still stay active and play the sport that they love. This is an action shot, and yes, that guy does have a beanie on, I'm not sure why. And those are our champions. On October 10th, we partnered with Walgreens, and we administered flu shots at the memorial. And we actually did 117 flu shots, and it was completely free. Walgreens offered a voucher for the participants to fill out, and then they would service them, so they would get the flu shot up at the War Memorial. On June 2nd, we did our first annual pickleball plaza, and I say first annual, because I believe there's gonna be a second one. There was eight teams, and this is the first tournament, pickleball tournament that I've ever done, but there were 32 participants. We had 21 volunteers, which included the referees and the line judges. These are some of the participants. The winners are gonna be on the left, and then on the right, hopefully, if this will work correctly, there's gonna be a video. The man in the blue shirt, in the saxophone, that is Enrique, he also teaches the music classes at the War Memorial. And Angel is to his left, and they will be playing our national anthem, if it works. Okay, how do I get over there? So it'll be me talking a little bit, but if you can't hear me talking, Enrique teaches the class.
Hi again. So I'm gonna introduce you to one of our fabulous instructors, Enrique. Enrique's student, Angel. So Angel came and he began to start to play music on a recorder. Everybody know what a recorder is? Those things that you wanna break because those kids play on? Yes. Angel started with that, and he worked his way up, and now he's playing the saxophone, and he's playing it well. Yesterday, we kinda begged them to learn the song. They learned the song yesterday. Today, if you do not mind, either stand or come along the baseline if it's uncomfortable in the bleachers because of the height differential, and we're gonna be singing or playing our national anthem.
Don't take a yield.
It's still America.
You can do whatever you want. May you please, if you would like to stand, let me rephrase that.
but also implementing it within the event that we had, our tournament. Thank you, Denise.
That's fantastic.
Another event that we had in August was our back-to-school fresh event. Now, this was a haircutting event. One of my favorite events. What happened was I went to several different barber shops and stylists within Daily City, and I asked them if they would like to donate their time. I found several people that wanted to donate their time, but the day was not ideal for them, because this is a workday for most barbers or stylists. The four that are listed, which was Vix's Barber Shop, Taylor Made, Instaglam, and Black and Gold, they're all on the top of the hill. They actually agreed to do it for four hours, and they gave us 10 stylists. They did 58 haircuts for free. We did it in the upper gym. Parents came, we took appointments, parents were happy, kids were happy. The transformation's just to get a free haircut, and some of us do know haircuts are expensive. Parents with three, four kids were leaving with brand-new haircuts for going back to school, so they could be back to school fresh. Great event, and they've all agreed to come back next year, as long as I don't do it on a Friday. They want to probably do it on the weekend, because those are gonna be their free days, and they could bring more stylists. There's some pictures of some of the barbers and the stylists. To the right is gonna be Instaglam, that was our only female stylist who participated. The one on the left is gonna be Black and Gold, which is the War Memorial neighbor. They're like less than a block away. To the right is gonna be Taylor Made Barber, and to the left, that's all the Black and Gold gentlemen that work there. Great event, great turnout, and again, just nice to see the kids smiling with the confidence just to go back to school. The last event that I wanted to highlight was a self-defense class. This was the most recent one. This was October 18th. We partnered with Gino Francisco, which is one of the head coach and owner of the 10th Planet Jesus Two in Daily City. He wanted to do a self-defense clinic, and we had the space to do it, and we did an online registration. 55 participants showed up. It was an hour long, it was an hour and a half, roughly, and it was great to see the age range. There was a five-year-old, and there was a 70-year-old woman in there, and they were doing holds on each other, and they were learning, and it was more about the confidence and the prevention of an attack. It wasn't really getting on the ground and tackling each other, it was more about being aware of your surroundings, which I think is important for all of us to learn at any age. But Gino did a great job, and he's wanting to come back as well. So that is just some of the events that we've had at the War Memorial, community events, the engagement piece, getting people into that building, building rapport with the community to show them that we have other things to offer, along with the classes and the sports and recreation that we already offer.
Thank you, Gina.
Thank you.
Thanks for keeping the center very busy.
Yeah, it's fun.
Well done.
And reaching out to the local community to get their participation in the events, so.
Yes.
That's great.
Thanks.
Have you asked the community what they want, like what is their line, or what do you see?
What they're interested in?
Yes, yes.
The people that are already coming in there, yes, I do, we do survey them, we ask them questions, what they're interested in. For me, because I'm also new to the city, if I find somebody that wants to offer something that we don't have, I try to put it out there, just to see, because new things are fun. But we've had a really good turnout with most of our events. A lot of it is because it's accessible at the War Memorial. They could come, they could hang out, we serve food there, they could do the sports, recreation, the dance, but they also can do their English, we have Spanish class, we have music class, so there's different things that people can do. But I could definitely continue to reach out to them to see what their interest is, because we all do have different interests.
Yeah. Like there are some, we have a big community of Filipinos, I don't know, and they, I don't know if they want what Chico or something like that. I have seen some Asians practice Chico, you know, the art.
Like the Tai Chi?
Tai Chi, yeah.
Yeah, we have a Tai Chi class. It's actually with, it's a sword and fan dancing, traditional Chinese.
Oh nice.
Yeah, we do have that, which is good, so.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Gina. And right around the corner, we're at the end of November, about a month from now, War Memorial will be basketball crazy, our youth basketball league starts in January, so January through March. Any given Saturday, if you stop in between, maybe, you know, 10 and 4, there will be basketball going on, upper and lower gyms.
Right, great.
Thank you, Gina.
Thank you. Before we move on to Commissioner's Report, it was just nice to see the center logo, Daily City logo is in the middle of that court, because it used to be a circle in that court, in the old version, but it's nice to see the logo there. Moving on to Commissioners Reports, you know, since our last meeting, you know, there's been a few events going on in the community, or maybe general public has reached out to one of us to kind of like to bring an awareness to the Recreation Commission. Anything like that has occurred recently that you'd like to share?
This is for you.
Yeah. We just recently had the Phil Am festivities up at Marchbanks, back in October.
It was in October, it seemed so long ago.
Yeah, and, you know, I got out there a little bit early before everyone started to show up, but as I was watching everyone set up, it just spoke that there was gonna be a big turnout. So it was nicely, actually every square inch of Marchbanks was used, and they had a nice little stage there for the opening ceremonies, so I was able to see that, with the two national anthems being sung. And so it was nice to see it getting kicked off, and it was not too bad of a day. So it was nice, it was a nice setup. So thanks to everyone involved. Anything else that you might wanna bring to the table?
Well, I did a post on Facebook, and I got some comments through there, and I think Joseph and Pam addressed it right there.
Oh, okay.
It was just a comment, but...
And if I could reply to that, too, just in case the person that posted the issue, and so that you know what we're talking about. There's been some concern about some marijuana smoking at Hillside Park involving, it appears to be both middle school and high school students. And just to give you an update, because I didn't know this 20 minutes ago, I did speak to the police captain, and also Lieutenant Musman was here a few minutes ago. There have been two arrests there recently, within the last two weeks, of three high school students that were indeed smoking marijuana, and when the police showed up, they ran. I mean, that was, the big problem is they ran away from the police, and they were caught. But I was also told by the captain today that all the watch commanders will be informed of this issue, and they will be keeping a very close lookout at Hillside Park, especially the area behind the clubhouse. And for those in the community who might be watching or have an interest in this topic, one of our problems is the Library and Recreation Department, or Department of Library and Recreation Services, we don't have staff at Hillside Park. It's a neighborhood park, I know Commissioner, or Vice Chair Sisson is very familiar with that area, so we don't have a lot of control of the activity day to day. So it was really great to hear that the police are stepping up their patrols over there to hopefully squash that activity that's happening in the after-school hours, so there's the update.
The power of social media. Thank you.
But thank you for replying so good right away, you guys.
Well, thank you. That ends it on a high note on that part, so that's good.
It's good on marijuana.
Ends it on a high note.
Yeah, well, sorry about that. That came out mistakenly.
Pardon the pun.
And the reality is, it's not just Hillside, it happens in parks. Generally tolerated among adults. I think that the real concern here is, it appears... I think the real concern here is, it appears there may be kids as young as middle school, and that's a little bit of a concern for the community.
Well, moving along, we're coming up to our announcements, and I think there's a couple of them to share here. Joseph, would you like to take the lead on those for us?
I'll start and let Denise chime in. Not, not on your list, but one I wanted to highlight is, this coming Thursday would be November 29th. It's our annual volunteer appreciation luncheon, holiday luncheon at the Dolder Senior Center. It's in the annual tradition, and it's great to give back something to those wonderful seniors who donate so many hours over the course of the year. They get, it's their day to be waited on instead of being ones volunteering. And I'll turn over to Denise for the rest of the announcements coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you. The second event is the Hot Cocoa Hangout. It's for teens. It's going to be on Saturday, December 1st, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Pacelli Event Center. So any teens that are interested, go on down to Pacelli Event Center, have some hot cocoa. They're doing karaoke, they're doing gingerbread houses, and listening to music and dancing, and just having a fun old time.
What's the time slot for that?
6:00 to 9:00 p.m. on Saturday, December 1st.
Okay, thank you.
And then I'll go back to the agenda. The Frosty Fest Winter Carnival will be on Saturday, December 15th, at the Pacelli Gym as well. It's going to be at 4 o'clock. It's free to get in, but if you want to participate in the games and activities, there is a fee, there's a family fee, there's an individual fee, but it's a very minimal cost, and there's many awesome prizes that the kids can win, so.
And that's the tree lighting event, then, right?
That is correct.
Yes. Then on Friday, December 21st, it's Show Cold Showcase, put on by the teens. Any teens that are interested in participating, if you have a specialty in singing or dancing or spoken word, come on down to the Pacelli Event Center. Apparently, Pacelli Event Center is going to be booming in December with all of these activities going on every weekend taken. It's going to be at 6 o'clock. There's no entrance fee, and anybody that comes or has any other questions or needs information can contact teens@dailycity.org, and one of our staff will get back to you. And then the final one, Joseph brought it up in the beginning, our 2019 Youth Basketball League is going to be starting up in January and run through mid-March. Registration for residents is $83, non-residents is $103. We play at all of the gymnasiums throughout Daly City, not just ours, but the shared ones. And if anybody has any information or wants to sign up, you can do that online, you can do it in person, and you can contact our main office at 650-991-8001 to get more information about what's going on. And those are your updates.
Very good. Very, thank you, Denise.
Thank you, Denise. Thank you. And being that we didn't have any speaker cards, all I want to share is, we didn't get a chance to say this in the early part of November, but I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving this past week, and we're back into the holiday season again as we roll into December. So as you're out and about, and the rain is coming along with it, drive safe, and watch for those kids in the crosswalk.
Amen.
Everyone. It gets dark earlier. And without any further ado for this evening's meeting, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Those in favor, you say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.